On order, February thirteenth, twenty twenty five, Chippewa County Board of Commissioners meeting. In celebration of his fine job as Chair on Tuesday, we will have Chairman Shackleton lead us in the.
I would be honored. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Commissioner Nepper.
Here.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Here.
Commissioner Shackleton.
Here.
Commissioner Trainer.
Here.
Chairman Martin.
Here.
All present, additions, deletions to the agenda, or shall we approve it as presented?
A move we accept is presented.
For motion and support any discussion about the approval of the county board minutes. All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Post. As organizational meeting, do we have to do anything with with the organizational meeting?
Approve it.
Approve it? Okay. It's kind of what I figured. Next organizational meeting, January seventh, twenty twenty five, page one to page seven in your packet.
Will we approve the minutes?
All support.
Motion and support we approved minutes as presented. Any discussion of all?
I would like to just say, because there's a lot of locations in the organizational minutes that say I passed, I was mostly to test out the Robert Tools of Order. You know, that that I was informed of, and partly because I was trying to figure out what people were doing. But thank you.
Strategery.
Yeah. I just was figuring it was kind of rare, so I wanted to add that.
Usually, don't they abstain?
Yeah, let's.
Abstention and passing are two different things.
It allowed me to come back in and vote at the end after everybody else's vote. But it also looks kind of weird.
Kelly, did we get? I mean, we did something with. Vice Chair has to be every year, and Chair every other year, even though it's in the same.
Two years.
Okay, just want to make sure. We were good on that. All right. Anyone else? All right, all those in favor of accepting the organization meeting as presented, sing a thought by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, motion passes. Correspondence, page eight.
Right motion. And move that we forward amongst the appropriate people.
Support, motion and support to accept these as written and forwarded to the appropriate places. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion pass. Public comments. We have, I know Lori, I saw Lori up there. Do we have any here? We'll come, we'll come right back to Zoom here in a second. Anyone on on the cyber world want to participate? Again, it's fifteen minutes per subject, three minutes per person, and we're going to keep comments focused on the subject at hand and not use it for character assassination, as kind of had happened a little bit ago last month. Yep. Who would like to go first?
I think Anthony has to.
We have Phyllis, I believe is the name. Oh, there we go. Anthony?
Can you hear us?
There we go. You're good, Phyllis.
Oh, hi. I wanted to tell you some good things that happened. Your new appointee to the Yuta Board came out and visited the island. No one's ever done that before. I mean, just to visit, we had a meeting like five years ago when there was a rate increase. You have to come out to tell us about the rate increase. But that's the only time anybody has ever come here just to visit and see what our island was like. He actually came out, he interviewed different people, just visited with them, seeing what their work, their ideas were and what their thoughts were and what their needs were, and came to some houses, came to the local community center where people were meeting for just a game of cards, and he just sat down and and visited with people, and it made such a positive impression to have somebody actually come to the island and see what, see what we're about. And I just wanted to tell you that was a very appreciated and positive move on his part and and that was a really nice way to start a relationship. So I just want to let you know that that was a very welcoming thing for him to do, and we were appreciative of it. And there's Lori, she wants to talk too.
Very good. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to say that we are still concerned about the Cloverland issue with Yuta imposing a two-hour rule. We're really concerned that it's going to be colder again next week, as if it's not cold enough, and we have a lot of snow here. But we're very concerned about that. We've gone to the last couple of Cloverland meetings, and they have been very kind, and they are trying to figure out a way that they can help. They've done a lot of work actually on it, Cloverland has. So if anybody from Cloverland, tell them that we appreciate them. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Miller. Appreciate it. Anymore? If we don't have anybody else out there in Cyberland?
I do not see any hands raised.
I'm sorry?
I do not see any other hands raised.
Okay, all right. We'll post public comments, I mean, once, going twice. Soon they're closed. Thank you. New business resolution, I'm sorry, administration report.
The Barry Smithler reports from the Department's Animal Control and Health Department, Sheriff's Department of Veterans Affairs, and Community Action Senior Services. Just a little bit of what we've been doing this week. We've had two water leaks, one in this building, one in the courthouse. The one in the courthouse could have been pretty bad if that office would have been left open. It was a shut-off valve in the bathroom that's across the hall from Katie's office. And Ryan started, Ryan LaPrada, the probation officer, was down in the basement. His ballast started filling up with water. Orville was running around. It was a pretty exciting day today at the courthouse. Other than that, we have many personnel issues going on right now with various offices that we are trying to get straightened out. We've got a personnel admin lead, we've got someone that would like to come back to work, that we're working with the attorney to make sure that if we can make accommodations or not for them to return to work. So we're just, it's been super busy personnel-wise in the office.
As events.
I don't envy you. You keep very busy. You have a lot on your plate.
I was just going to ask, where are we at as far as roofs go? We know what happened at the middle school.
Well, we actually have a crack in the roof that was replaced above the jail that Mr. Donaghy is keeping an eye on and keeping clear back. Great Lakes Roofing has been made aware of the crack. And again, our worry is, is that if anything gets underneath, then it freezes, and then it expands. That is under warranty though, because that was when we did the health department roof and the roof on this building, which I believe was less than five years ago. Does that seem about right, Karen? Do you remember? Yeah, so Orville and Scott do a very good job. We have had to close the courthouse main entrance one morning because of the ice that comes off of the third floor. And we're talking larger than bowling ball sizes of ice that will come off of that. Scott will sometimes get up there with a two-by-four and knock them off, but we have had to reroute people before to get them in the building. And we will have an issue if anybody is ever handicapped accessible, and we can't give them the building, but we've avoided that so far. We have also had First Amendment auditors back in the building. And the last gentleman that was in did point out a couple of things on the signage that the judges have posted since ninety-nine. So the judges are going to redo their administrative order, and we'll get some new signs updated because the old signs have indicate that they cannot have their phones with them, but they can now have their phones with them in the courtroom in order to take photos. They can't video. So we will be updating that signage and noting the law that gives them the authority to for the search to go through the metal detector, because that was the question. The gentleman was here for probably a better part of an hour talking with the security guards, trying to engage with them and, you know, trying to get a reaction, which he did not do. Mr. Chamberlain and Ms. Belleville did a very good job of just sitting there and talking with him. So there's, there's just a lot going on.
Yeah, as I say, as we get new people, they've got to be exposed to all these things too. I did learn something which totally blew me away. A lot of people have complained, well, why didn't, why didn't they shovel the roof at the middle school? By that collapse, that was my classroom for nine years. But they're not supposed to shovel off the top of their roof. It's supposed to be built to code. And all buildings in Michigan with a flat roof have to be built to a certain code. And by going up there, that membrane that you were talking about, that gets holes in it, and then the water leaks in, you have all that. So I learned that yesterday, that it was rather apropos, because I was on the garage roof and almost fell again. I need to probably stop. Just stand the ground or something.
And just to continue down this path a little bit, in speaking with the building inspector, he has had three of those steel buildings that have engineered stamped engineered drawings that have bent this year. Not the trusses, but the sidebar, I don't know what it's called, I don't know the, but the it's a bar underneath, I'm sorry.
Like the header of the sides, you mean?
Yeah, like the truss is here, and then there's another bar that sort of is from the wall to the ceiling. And it has, they have pictures, and it has actually bent two places up by Drummond, and I believe the other one might be in the Trout Lake area. But stamped engineered drawings in those buildings have bent.
We've got more snow here than they have, so. This is like the old-fashioned winters my wife told me about. This is how it was every year.
Oh, yeah.
For decades, probably centuries. We just got spoiled the last three years, I think. I'm not complaining much. All right, anything else?
That's the longest I've talked in.
Thank you. All right. Motion to accept the administrative report as presented?
So move.
Support.
Any more discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post, which passes. New business resolution twenty-five oh one, page twenty-four in the packet. We have Mr. Trummel, who is twenty-three years been an employee with us, with the EDC, and this is to thank him for his many years of service. We'll need to be a roll call vote, though.
We need a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, we have to motion first.
I'll make motion.
Motion.
Support.
Motion and support. Now we can have a roll call vote. Sorry.
Commissioner Nepper?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Shackleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Trainer?
Yes.
Chairman Martin?
Yes. Next, resolution twenty-two five dash oh two, Brian Decker, over three decades with with us. So certainly want to send this tribute to him.
I would make the motion.
Motion.
Support.
And support. Any discussion about Mr. Decker? Again, roll call vote for his.
Nepper? Yes. Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Shackleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Trainer?
Yes.
Chairman Martin?
Yes. Next discussion on Zoom for Finance Claims and Accounts meetings. We'll start with Commissioner Nepper.
Sure. I had requested this. I didn't be placed on the agenda. There was an email. I think kind of just an unofficial email that had gone out maybe a few weeks ago regarding whether or not the Finance Committee should retain the use of Zoom, live Zoom coverage, because we don't really get a tremendous amount of engagement on our Finance Committee Zoom calls. And I guess I just wanted to make sure that we had a public discussion about it, because I hear as a new commissioner, a lot of feedback from people in the community that, of course, don't use our tools that we offer, but say things like there's not enough transparency, we don't know what's going on, blah, blah, blah. And so I am very, I guess I'm very interested in making sure that we retain as much transparency as possible, especially because we do so much business in the Finance Committee meetings, and when it comes to the full commission, many times we kind of read through all the motions that were made, but it's a very kind of rapid review. Of course, it's available in minutes. Of course, the public can look it over, but I would rather see us continue to promote the use of public engagement through Zoom or other means as opposed to removing it. Although I am curious, I guess I didn't ask the administrator if there's substantial cost. I know we have staff time used for it, but I personally would like to see it remain and be used. And I don't know if you'd like to, that's something we could ask the administrator about the cost associated with it, if there's any savings.
I and I can't really speak for you, but I would think the cost would be.
The cost is just, I mean, I've got two people available to do it. The track record shows we have had the average of one over the last six to eight months that comes on Tuesday night. I already have the gentleman from IT, they're on call twenty-four seven. If I can get him out of gear at four thirty instead of five thirty for twelve nights out of the year, sometimes that's a saver because they do all the stuff on the weekends. Just looking at it, it just didn't seem advantageous, or it didn't seem like we were getting out to the people when we only have one person on average logging into the Zoom, and we do all the same business. And I understand what you're saying, you know, we shorten it up and things like that, but through the regular board.
Yeah, and I'm certainly, I think it, you know, certainly did not come across to me like we were trying to. It was, it was a good reason for bringing it up, but I just personally would prefer us to keep those services in order to really make sure the public in Chippewa County is aware, especially of the heavy-duty things that we do in the Finance Committee. And even if we don't have many users, I think it's important. That's, that's my personal opinion.
They are videotaped though, right? Then we put them up?
Not finance.
Well, not finance, just the regular board.
Yeah, we've never videoed finance.
Okay, I wasn't aware. Yeah, I don't have real strong feelings about it either way. My, I think what I mentioned in response to that email was that everything that's taken up at Finance Claims and Accounts is also taken up at the regular board meeting. So it's not like there's any action going on that the public doesn't have the ability to be, you know, at least somewhat exposed to or aware of. And I, and I know Kelly also will always send out agendas. You know, get on the list, and you'll get them from now on in advance, you know, forever. You'll get the agendas of what's coming up. And, and of course, the regular board meeting. Well, all the board meetings, you'd be on the list, and you get all the meetings and all the, everything we're doing. So we are very transparent, and I acknowledge, you know, your desire to be be transparent, because we do need to recognize that if it's worth continuing to do when we have an average of one person, I'm not sure. That's, that's kind of tough.
Anecdotally, I think I have a familial relationship with that one person.
Can I ask too, is there a little bit of a history?
Your wife.
Why we.
Like Steve, we barely.
Because of COVID. We started, we started doing Zoom because of COVID. And then we just said, you know, it's, it's an okay practice. But that's, that's when we started with during COVID.
And I will, I guess I will add to my, my initial experience, you know, being elected just in November was prior to Commissioner Shackleton coming back was, and this is no offense to any previous, but just a speedrun type of a, of a, of a mentality. And so I, I think if there was with the Finance Committee going forward, maybe, you know, as we vote things through at the regular commission meeting, more more explanation and a little bit more deliberation and background given to the public, I'd be you know, more satisfied, but I would still, I would still like to make a motion to retain the Zoom at least for the remainder of this year, and perhaps review it going into twenty twenty-six, and, you know, I'd be happy to, you know, let, let my constituents know that they could hop on it and, you know, get the word out a little bit more. But that's my motion.
And I know minutes are posted.
And we've been putting the agendas on the three days before, when you guys get the packets, the agendas have been going on the website as well.
And is, is there a way if, let's say, somebody wanted to attend one? Because you're right, the heavy lifting is on the finance. You know, people are kind of look at this like, jeez, it looks like they've decided everything. Well, we've hashed a lot of things out at finance, because we're, we're all there, all five of us are there. So I understand wanting to be aware of what goes on at that meeting, because by the time we get to Thursday night, you know, the die has been cast, so to speak. I think at that point, we've talked it all out, we've debated, we've looked at the pros and the cons. My, my question is this, is it worth one person? Because I just have.
Now that I know that usually Commissioner Lawrence's wife, is that one person? I'm even less convinced. So, so I don't know. It's a tough one, because you want to be as transparent as, as you can be. But it's also tough to justify the perhaps overtime expense of having a tech person in to, to run the run the board, so to speak.
They get overtime or do they get?
Well, it could be.
Their salary.
Oh, even after nights and weekends, and they're still just.
Even, even if they're in the jail ten hours on a Saturday night.
Well, so we work them to death for free.
I mean, I just offer one more. I guess the only other question I have is I didn't know if there was any official decision made based on the email conversation regarding it being canceled or not. So that's the other thing I was wondering, is, you know, in terms of our county commissioners interacting via email, this is a very minor issue, but, you know, is it something that, you know, that was decided or not? I didn't get the feeling on that. That's why I also wanted it on.
I think if I could, I think usually, I mean, any issue like what we're talking about right now, Kelly could have just made the decision, because it's really an administrative decision. She was just reaching out to us to say, do you have any strong feelings about this? So, so, yeah. Any, anything we do truly has to be done publicly in honoring the Open Meetings Act. This is just a small administrative matter that could have just been done really without Kelly even telling us, you know, but, you know, again, I think deference, she reached out and said, you guys have any strong feelings about this?
Which I do.
Okay.
But no one else has to. This is my opinion.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, but there wouldn't be anything preventing us from, if we have a hot button issue coming up that we, you know, people have expressed a desire to know more about, we could fire up the Zoom for finance and just announce this, you know, for this meeting for.
We would just post it on the website like we do.
As far as I'm concerned, even if it was, you know, three, four citizens that were stuck on an island and they wanted to see it, and it'd be worth planning it up for, you know, upon request.
Am I to understand that it was canceled then already, or are we saying that we are going, I, my motion is that we retain the Zoom and review use, you know, at least for the rest of this year, since we already started this year, let's zoom for finance.
We did not zoom on Tuesday night.
Okay, I didn't realize that.
A couple of things I want to touch on. No, nothing is ever decided on emails. That just, just doesn't happen, and it's. And if you notice, when, when we have emails, I rarely, if ever, do reply all. I'll generally just reply to Kelly, because I don't want us to be in violation of, of Open Meetings Act or someone's interpretation of the Open Meetings Act that we're having meetings online out of the public eye. And that's, that's a bridge we do not want to cross, because that can get really ugly and really expensive. So that, you know, that's just my take on it. Other commissioners have done reply all, and, you know, but, you know, you start getting that gray area, and then people start questioning your integrity, and that's certainly what I want to avoid. So I don't, I don't know exactly how we want to word this. You know, as I say, run up the fly pole, see if anybody sleuths, and see where we're at on that. I don't. Well, Commissioner Nepper, this is your baby.
Well, I made a motion. If there is no support, then I, I guess I'm not sure what, if someone else would make a motion that officially would, would cancel the service, or if that was just administratively decided based on based on whatever levels of feedback were received.
I would not make a decision like that without the majority of the court.
I this is just me, I'm throwing it out there, would be okay with if a need arises for finance to be zoomed. I would be okay with that, because obviously if they have that much interest, then, you know, we want those people informed, or especially if it's winter time and they're on, you know, one of the two islands that doesn't have service during some parts of the winter that they would maybe want to see, but they would have to contact, we would need to put that somewhere on our website that if you feel the need for, for a finance meeting to be zoomed, as long as given how many hours notice, we, we could accommodate that. That's that's me, I'm one of five, so. Any ideas? The rest of you want to go with?
I think that could be accommodated administratively. I don't, you know, I don't want to micromanage anything.
It's, you know, yeah, I just go back to, it's, it's a tough call, because on the one hand, you want to be as open and accessible as possible. On the other hand, if nobody's watching the finance meeting, then why, does it really make sense to continue to do it? Maybe you take some time off until you find out that there are people who wish to attend on a regular basis, or, or even occasionally. But, you know, at this point, it's just hard to justify doing it when the usual viewer is the commissioner's spouse. And I don't know, that's on the other hand, I, I agree with Justin, with Commissioner Nepper, that we want to be open, we want to be accessible, we want to be transparent, and that is a hundred percent true. But if you keep doing it, and nobody is utilizing that particular service, because don't forget too, the meetings are open. There's nothing stopping anybody from coming to a finance meeting. They're always open. And, and the Zoom is relatively new within the last couple of years, and was a result of COVID.
So could we table this for ninety days? And see if anybody misses it?
Yeah, it doesn't really need to be tabled, if I may say, because there's no support for the motion, so really the motion, you know, died from lack of support unless somebody supports it. But we could, you know, whatever, whatever you think is appropriate.
I mean, again, well, there's nothing stopping, you know, could we even give it ninety days and then make the motion again now?
Well, like I said, my experience with, I'm not asking for Zoom for any other committee meetings. It just seemed to me as a new commissioner that financing claims is a very powerful and in-depth committee meeting that is then I had, I had not experienced meetings where, you know, we vote on millions of dollars of, of things, and then when you get the public meeting, you know, I'm sorry, the regular commission meeting, we tend to very efficiently pass the motion, or, you know, pass the entire packet, and it seemed to be less less of, less of the ability for the public to engage in that than if we had on our agenda four hours of voting at the public meeting on all these different items. So that's the only reason I personally feel like the Finance and Claims Committee should be more open and transparent, and, and I understand what you guys are saying, that commissioners are saying that people can come to, to the finance committee. So if there is no support, I'll just make sure that, you know, my constituents know that they can come here on a Tuesday night and see what's going on.
Put this on the agenda for May meeting?
Yeah.
It's your agenda. You can put whatever you want on it.
Say, see if anybody misses it or complaints. We don't need a vote to. To put it on the agenda in May. So we will come back to this in ninety days.
Thank you for the discussion.
No problem at all. Your your motives are are outstanding. I mean, transparency is one of the biggest complaints people have about our government at every level, so. All right, uh. Anyone else?
The biggest thing that I hear at the board meetings that I go to, township board meetings, doesn't matter which one, is about the jail. That, why are we letting federal prisoners in here? And when you explain it to them. Just that's one of the best ideas there ever was.
Say, I was like shocked that you said. There's, there's. Reasons why we do that, most of my.
The the capacity of that jail was actually built. Overbuilt in order to accommodate federal prisoners. You know, that's why it was built larger than, uh, than was actually needed at the time. And, um, I don't, I wasn't crazy about the idea, but it it actually has brought in a lot of revenue.
But once I tell them what the deal is, they're all satisfied. Go for it, because it's paying for itself.
All right, um, next we have building grounds, um, jail legislative natural resource information project, may chairman trainer.
I guess we just need a motion to approve the supplemental services at the animal control. Putting in the surgery is basically what it is. Everything will be done right there on site. That'll save money and I was in there two weeks ago, went through all the new stuff with Polly and.
Okay, wait a minute.
Yeah, I think you're.
You need to do the building ground, building and grounds meeting.
Page twenty six.
Yeah, that's what I said, page twenty six.
Right, but that, that's not part of his meeting that he's talking about. Your sidebar.
That's when we went and looked at the the control boards and the jail and all that.
Okay, that mine here says all the animal control. He must have a different twenty six in mind.
Are you in the, do you have the?
That's okay. Maybe I got the wrong finance package.
We're good.
There was no action taken on the sheriff's department on a jail controls, control boards. So their motion to approve.
I'm sorry, what are we approving?
That's on, uh, building and grounds jail control boards. There was no action taken according to the.
At the end, we we go on the entire.
We're not going line by line.
It was moved by Commissioner Shackleton, supported by Commissioner Nepper, recommend approval of generators, repair, billings, finance, and claims accounts committee on a voice vote, motion carried.
Support.
Motion and support.
Got it right on that one.
Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Post, motion passes.
Next one, it was moved by Commissioner Nepper, supported by Commissioner Shackleton to approve authorized release requests for quotes on central dispatch. UPS electric, electricity upgrade for the public defenders rally bar on a voice vote, the motion carried.
Support.
Motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor, so you could probably saying aye.
Aye.
Post, motion passes.
It was moved by Commissioner Nepper, seconded by Commissioner Shackleton to adjourn the meeting on a voice vote, the motion was carried.
Motion and support. Except the. Meeting minutes as presented. Further discussion? All those in favor? Post, motion passes.
Did I get them all up times?
I'm sorry, did we do a motion to accept the minutes? Okay, I was reading ahead on finance, getting, preparing myself.
Okay, uh, next finance claims accounts. Mr. Shackleton.
Thank you. Finance claims, as we were talking about earlier. Um, we had a regular meeting on February eleventh, two thousand twenty-five. Members present included myself, Jim Martin, Justin Nepper, Damon Lorenz, and Jim Trainer. Members absent were none, others present were Karen Sanctus, Katie Bowers, and Kelly Church. Uh, we approved the agenda as amended, if because we added items, uh, for a nine unit. Cat stacks, which is a kennel, uh, for animal control. And item number eight, probate court, emergency guardianship services. So we added those to the agenda. The agenda was, uh, moved by Commissioner Martins, supported by Commissioner Trainer, and approved by the rest of the body. Under public comment, Health Officer Karen, uh, Sanctus updated the committee on our ex kids program. That will be launching in Chippewa County. The program is made possible through various funders and supporters. There are no county dollars being needed. There will be press releases and advertising coming, and basically this program, uh, is not need-based. And any, uh, pregnant, uh, woman, um, I think what, after fourteen weeks? Will be eligible eligible to start receiving money up until the baby is six months old. And it is meant to support the mother and the needs of the baby. Um, correspondence and informational items, the committee reviewed the county treasurer's investment reports, visa billing, travel requests. And the DTRF, our HFV quarterly report. No action was required on that. Under the Health Department, the Health Department asked to pass a motion to approve changing the Health Department's EIN. That's their tax ID number to the county's EIN effective October first, two thousand twenty-five. It was moved by Commissioner Lawrence, supported by Commissioner Trainer to do that. And on a voice vote, the motion carried, and I would so move.
Support, motion and support on the EIN. Any discussion? All those in favor? Post, motion passes.
Uh, Health Department, uh, again, there was a new logo that was proposed for the Health Department. It was moved by Commissioner Trainer, supported by Commissioner Martin to approve and authorize the Health Department's new logo as presented. On a voice vote, the motion carried, and I would so move.
Motion and support on the new logo, because the old one was obsolete and inaccurate. Any discussion? All those in favor? Post, motion passes.
Staying with the Health Department, they had two new policies or, uh, at least changes to policies that, uh. And or new, the committee reviewed two new, new health department policies, clinical policy four point oh, one point zero zero seven. Was needed to accommodate state guidelines. And policy seven oh, one oh, five, three is a new policy that will allow the shack clerk. To administer over the counter medications to students such as ibuprofen. It was moved by Commissioner Lawrence and squared by Commissioner Nepper to approve and authorize those two policies. On a voice vote, the motion carried, and I would so move.
Support.
And support, any discussion?
I I would say, I believe there was, um, a requirement or a, I believe it was a requirement that for shack. To administer medications parental notification or parental.
Permission.
Permission was required, so I just want to make sure that was clear.
For everything they do in shack, it's all, you have to have permission from parents. Usually it's given beginning of the year. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Post, motion passes.
The sheriff's office, um, the sheriff's office was asked, uh, they asked us to authorize a wage of sixteen dollars and forty-five cents. For a new part-time position in the jail, the position will serve as the federal inmate liaison officer. Uh, it was moved by Commissioner Lawrence, supported by Commissioner Nepper to approve and authorize that part-time position. At sixteen dollars and forty-five, which is step seven on the county part-time A scale. On a voice vote, the motion carried, and I would so move.
Support. Motion and support on the sixteen dollar forty-five cent, uh, part-time. Yeah, any discussion? All those in favor? Post, motion passes.
Uh, staying with the sheriff's office, which is really more than just the sheriff's office, we're talking about, uh, the generator for the building. The committee was updated, uh, the needed general repairs, rental of the spare unit, and update on how we got to where we are. Five thousand four hundred and ninety-three dollars in repairs stems from originally the generator not starting for its weekly check. That led to batteries, battery, uh, chargers, cables, fuses, and to the electrical room. Where the breaker was locked and unable to fail when it needed to. The spare unit was rented until parts were available and service rendered. Fourteen thousand nine hundred twenty dollars and fifty-five cents is to replace the radiator. Which should be done later this, uh, year. It is a small leak maintenance has been watching. Administration will report back to the committee on any additional issues. It was moved by Commissioner Trainer, supported by Commissioner Lawrence to approve and authorize those repairs. Uh, of, and the the cost of the rental unit, uh, the numbers I I previously mentioned. Uh, as presented on a voice vote, the motion carried, and I would so move. Support.
Motion and support on the radiator and other things. Generator, any discussion? All those in favor? Post, motion passed.
Office of Emergency Services, this is a Rave Emergency Notification System. Annual service, four thousand two hundred and eighty dollars, as well as instructor course for EMTs. Seven thousand two hundred dollars, seven-person rate. The committee reviewed the annual renewal from Rave, which provides emergency messaging to our communities. Um, include, oh, that reminds me, I got a message today that was attached. Including cell phones, TV announcements, and zones, specific landlines. The committee reviewed a request to provide seven thousand two hundred dollars for an EMP instructor course. These courses are the responsibility of the Office of Emergency Services. It was moved by Commissioner Trainer, supported by Commissioner Martin to approve and authorize both of those things. On a voice vote, the motion carried, and I would so move.
Support, motion and support, any discussion on the rave? There being none, all those in favor? Post, motion passes.
Animal shelter. Um, the committee reviewed a request from animal control, uh, as one of their goals was to provide some medical care in-house. During the addition and renovation, a surgical suite was included. The request is to start purchasing the necessary equipment. The equipment availability is subject to change. The equipment included. Um, surgery table, autoclave, anesthetic machine, vaporizer, surgery warming mat, ceiling mounted surgical light. And and other necessary items to do those surgeries. It was a total of twelve thousand one hundred seventy-five dollars, plus an additional two thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. For something called a mayo stand, ultrasonic cleaner, surgery packs, and controlled substance lockbox. Committee reviewed the requests for a nine units cat stacks, which is an indoor cat enclosure. At the cost of five thou, four thousand five hundred seventy dollars. To replace units that have a bit of rust on them as they are not able to be cleaned properly. Shelter manager believes she has someone that can repair and resurface those rusting units. It was moved by Commissioner Trainer, supported by Commissioner Martin to approve waiving of the county purchasing policy. And to purchase the listed items. And I would, on the voice vote, the motion carried, and I would make that motion here.
Support, motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor? Post, motion passes.
Uh, staying with the animal shelter, there's a supplemental animal control services agreement with the city of Sault Ste. Marie. Uh, we do that every year. It is to provide additional and more focused services for the city and they. Pay extra for it. It was moved by Commissioner Lawrence, supported by Commissioner Nepper to approve and authorize the supplemental animal control services. Uh, covering this calendar. Yeah, this calendar year, or is it two years?
It's a two year.
Two years, thank you. Uh, between the city of Sault Ste. Marie and the county of Chippewa. At the amount of one thousand three hundred dollars per month. Uh, on a voice vote, the motion carried, and I would so move, support.
Motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor? Post, motion passes.
Next, we move to District Court, um, JAV's Maintenance and Support Agreement. The JAV's is the audio and video system. The committee reviewed the JAV's Maintenance and Support Agreement for the ninety-first District Court. It provides an extended warranty coverage, preventive maintenance, support and services. The service agreement runs from February first, two thousand twenty-five for a one-year period. At a cost of six thousand one hundred and ten dollars and it was budgeted for. It was moved by Commissioner Lawrence and supported by Commissioner Trainer to authorize and approve that contract. On a voice vote, the motion carried, and I would so move.
Core, motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor? Motion pass.
Survey and remonumentation. Um, the committee was asked to make a correction motion from the November twelfth, two thousand twenty-four Finance Claims and Accounts Minutes. The minutes should have reported the total grant at one hundred thirty-three thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars. Including the county's fifteen thousand dollar allocation. It was moved by Commissioner Lawrence and supported by Commissioner Trainer to issue that, to do that corrective, uh, motion. On a voice vote, it was carried, and I would so move, support.
Motion and support and discussion. All those in favor?
Okay, also surveyor, this is, uh, again, the, uh, two thousand twenty-five remonumentation program. Uh, total of the aforementioned one hundred thirty-three thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars. The administration amount of nineteen thousand eighty-eight dollars going to Patricia Weinress. Monumentation contracts, fifty-four thousand to Alpine Engineering. And to Cidoc Group, both of which will be doing thirty corners each. Peer review professional surveyors, five thousand dollars shared between Jeff Davis. Bill Carr, Ginger Mikowski, Larry Rogers, and Lawrence Weinress. The committee reviewed the two thousand twenty-five survey and remonumentation grant. And approved the aforementioned amounts. And let's see, who made them? Oh, here we go. It was moved by Commissioner Lawrence. And on a voice vote, it carried, and I would make the motion here.
Motion and support. Any more discussion? Those in favor? Post, motion passes.
From the, from administration, legal services agreement. Uh, Smith and Johnson, and we, the is asking the county to be a co-plaintiff. With the EDC for PFAS, PFAS-related airport settlements. Um, the committee was asked to enter into a legal services agreement. For the county and the EDC as in a multi-district litigation regarding PFAS. Which I'm not going to be able to pronounce it, it's a chemical. Um, that is used at air force base or, uh, air force bases and I think air landing strips. The defendants in the suit are companies that manufactured the foam. A, uh, which is AFFF, it's a water-based firefighting agent used to control and extinguish. Class B fuel fires and was used in many military locations, including Kinslo Air Force Base. It was moved by Commissioner Trainer, supported by Commissioner Martin, that we, uh, enter into that legal services agreement. On voice vote, the motion carried, and I would so move.
Motion and support, and, uh, one thing with this is it, uh, it is going to. Be like the opioid settlement, the money will come probably trickling in as.
If there's any.
It's worked out, yeah, that's sure. They could lose. Any other? All those in favor? Post, motion passes.
Administration Cost Allocation Plan, uh, requesting a, uh, RFQ release. This is a, uh, something that's done periodically. This quote is for the county's cost allocation plan for. This quote is for the county's cost allocation plan for FY two twenty four and FY twenty five and FY twenty six. It was moved by Commissioner Lawrence, supported by Commissioner Nepper to approve and authorize the release of a request for quotes for the county allocation plan. On voice vote, the motion carried, and I would so move.
Support. Motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes.
Uh, again, from administration, there's a request for the discharge of a non-diminishing mortgage. The committee reviewed a letter from attorney Mark Dobias, requesting and explaining the request for the county to approve the release of lien. The property is dilapidated and the estate value is negligible. The asset has no, or the estate has no assets, and the lien is holding up the sale of the property. It was moved by Commissioner Nepper, supported by Commissioner Lawrence to approve and authorize the county of Chippewa to discharge the non-diminishing mortgage lien recorded lever one zero zero two, ages fifteen thirteen to fifteen fourteen, in the amount of eight thousand two hundred and eighty three dollars. On a voice vote, the motion carried, and I would so move. Support.
Motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes.
Probate court, emergency guardianship services. The committee reviewed an emergency request for guardianship services line item be added in the amount of five thousand dollars due to recent events, the prior provider who did many of these cases pro bono. There are currently thirty six cases that need to be overseen. The judge is estimating that about twenty five of these cases will require some emergency payment from the county that's been working with a company called Assisting Services that can fill this role temporarily, eh, and maybe long term, uh, but it is not free. Judge Blue Ball would like the opportunity to meet further talk about long-term needs and resolutions going forward. Basically, there's vulnerable folks in our community who need an appointed guardian. Uh, this one person had lots of them, and, um, now they need new guardians, and there are none available. It was moved by Commissioner Lawrence, supported by Commissioner Nepper to approve and authorize a emergency guardian services, uh, line item in the amount of five thousand dollars, on a voice vote, the motion carried, and I would so move.
Support. Motion and support, any discussion?
I would just, uh, say, Commissioner Lawrence, you had mentioned you were gonna follow up about setting the meeting, setting a meeting with Judge.
I haven't had a chance to.
Okay, I would just, like, make, make.
I'd like, I'd like us to do, I think that's a great idea, I think we can come up with a solution.
And then I would just, in general, encourage folks to become a guardian if you have the ability to do so.
Anyone else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion passes.
Move to finance claims and accounts, uh, for the county and the health department. It was moved by Commissioner Martin, supported by Commissioner Trainer to recommend the approval of the January county bills and payroll. General claims, three hundred twenty four thousand eight hundred sixty five dollars and twenty eight cents. Other fund claims, one million six hundred twenty three dollars eighty nine and one cent. Payroll, six hundred thirty three thousand dollars, five.
Uh-oh.
Uh-oh, there's a typo there.
Yep.
Should that be, what is that? Should, okay.
Yes, and an extra zero.
Or commas, commas in the wrong place, so we wanna make sure.
Five oh, three forty two.
Extra zero, is there?
Yes.
Okay, so this is payroll, uh, of six hundred thirty three thousand five hundred and three and forty two cents. Health department claims, one million two hundred nine thousand two hundred ninety nine and twenty cents, and payroll of one hundred forty two thousand nine dollars and eight cents. Total claims, three thousand, three million nine hundred thirty two thousand dollars, seven hundred sixty five and ninety nine cents. On a voice vote, the motion carried, and I would so move. I proudly support paying the bills.
Motion and support to pay the bills. Discussion? No, those in favors?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion passes.
Uh, there are no comments offered by either the committee or by the chairman. It was moved by Commissioner Nepper and supported by Commissioner Martin to adjourn the meeting, and I would make the motion that the finance claims and accounts meeting minutes of February eleventh, two thousand twenty five be approved.
Support.
Motion and support. All those in favor, so you can try by saying aye.
Aye.
Well.
I didn't know if there's discussion.
Oh, could be.
Can I just say one thing? My, my fears, uh, or no, my concerns regarding Zoom, uh, at the finance committee are assuaged due to Commissioner Shackleton's very clear and concise and fifteen minute, um, overview, review of the finance committee. Thank you.
I think.
Very good. Wow, gosh. Um. I'm looking at. There's something missing. Like, committee comments and chairman comments?
There were none, weren't there?
No, I, I, I'm, I'm talking for this, for the commissioners.
Do we vote? Point of order, we have a motion on the table, I believe.
Yeah, we do have to do that, all those in favor, we all said aye. Post.
Did we?
No. Yeah, we said aye.
Okay.
I thought.
I, I interrupted it, I'm sorry.
Do you need them to vote? Or, word gate, do, do you need them to vote on?
Hmm, no.
Okay.
Um. No, I was, I was talking about for, for the commissioners meeting, our packet.
Okay.
Yeah, number eleven, commissioners report on meetings and board group presentation.
Shouldn't it be a twelve? And then the journal?
No, we, we go with eleven.
Right. Um.
Number twelve. I actually have a gentleman. Uh, I think is, is probably everybody knows, it appears the Sioux tribe, which is finding, has had a ransomware attack and it's shut down pretty much their whole operation, and, you know, it's just awful and scary, and this is the world we live in today. Um, while it's fresh in my mind, I just wanna suggest that once they are through it and, um, back on their feet and able to assess everything that happened, that we try to put together a meeting and maybe, uh, invite other interested parties like the city or the hospital or whoever, and try to learn from them as they've gone through it now, to say, here's, here's what we wish we had done to be better prepared, and here are things you may wanna do in order to be better prepared for, for such a thing happens. Um, you know, because it's, uh, um, yeah, it's, it's scary, and it's, it's the, people spend a lot of time trying to disrupt and, and um, hijack money from you, and, and, um, so I, I'm sure they would probably be happy to do that. I will just say, the one thing I did mention to a, uh, one of the, uh, tribal board members mentioned to me, thank goodness we had cyber insurance. And I thought, hmm, I wonder if the county has cyber insurance, but, um, we do, good, glad to hear it, because he said, man, thank goodness we had it, because it, uh, it, it went into action immediately and began helping and working to, to get things back. So.
It's a very big part of our renewal with MMR, may now, there's, uh, two pages of questions that our IT department goes through, what we have, what we don't have. Um, so yes, we do.
Okay, great. Well, again, I think, y- y- you know, especially with the tech people, that they have an opportunity to say, tell us what you learned from this, that we could improve our systems. And, um, I hope that could be shared with, uh, lots of entities throughout our community, be it the hospital, the city, or whoever.
I, I wanna say, hasn't Wexford County been reeling for months and months and months? Um. I, I wanna say that, in fact, I think the mayor of Cadillac just resigned.
Hmm.
That was, I think, part of the reason was, that, that made the, the PFAS also. So you talk about ransomware and PFAS in the same county? Oh. That's.
Well, I wish, I, I wish the folks who are at the Sioux tribe work on this the best, and I, I sure hope it comes to a su- successful resolution here in short order.
I, I would just add to it mostly because it's interesting, uh, and affects me. I'm bringing a, like a three hundred person convention to Quin Casino in May, and people were actively trying to book their rooms, and there is currently a week plus at least of no ability for folks to do that, so it has a very direct impact on them and, and their customers.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely.
But they're helping us through it, this must stick.
Yeah.
Any others, Commissioner Lawrence? Mr. Trainer?
Very sad.
So, uh, that would mean we would want a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion? Or? That's right.